Please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Keenan makes a motion, does she have a second?
Go first.
Dr. Former, second, on favor show hands. Motion carries. Alright. Tonight, we're gonna appoint a new board member to replace Janet, which I wanna say, I, we all agree, we appreciate Janet's service. Unfortunately, she had to take a new job and has unable to fill her terms. So, at last board meeting, we had announced the vacancy. We give two weeks to, for anybody in the community to apply for the position. And we had a strong community that understood the importance of the Board of Education. And we had interest from three people. Only one person filled out an application, so it made our decision pretty easy. And we drug somebody from out of retirement. Fortunately, this individual is immediately qualified, has been a pillar of our community and education system for decades. Decades.
You got him a decade, boy.
I was like, Mrs. Dai is a graduate here of Waynesville High School, a former teacher, a former administrator, and a founder of the Waynesville R six School Foundation. Her knowledge of our community and the field of education will be a tremendous asset to our district over the course of the next year, which is the length of the time remaining. So with that, do I have a motion to approve Janice Dai to fulfill the seat?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion, does he have a second? Mr. Dearing, second, on favor show hands. Okay. Megan?
Hugh Megan.
Megan, you're up.
Okay, come on over. Come on down. Price is right. That's the thing, I need to get my board that paid.
I did clear up some money in the budget. We did get three percent, we did get three percent raise with nothing.
Thirty times zero.
Thirty times odd is odd.
Um, I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
That I will support-
That I will support-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Missouri-
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
And impartially-
And impartially-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
Of school board member-
Of school board member-
In and for the Waynesville-
In and for- The Waynesville R six School District.
County of Pulaski-
County of Pulaski-
State of Missouri-
State of Missouri-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability-
According to law.
According to the law.
And I'll just need a quick signature from-
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, and I will have to-
Oh, okay, okay, now I know my name.
And again, thank you for stepping up. Communit-, or citizens' statements, participation?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had no one request participation as per Board Policy BDDH.
Written communications?
We had no written communications either.
Okay, we'll skip on over to this. District announcements?
Well, we have our middle school with us tonight. Look at that large contingency back there. I wanna say before I, before my written and prepared remarks here, I do thank you for, for everything that you've done. I know it's been a year of transition. You have a new principal. Things are going great. You've been crammed in a building, but just look at all the great, the future, the horizon that you have in front of you here is gonna be fantastic. So, we do appreciate everything you've, you've done and will do for our kids. And we will recognize you tonight, excuse me, during our, our Board Spotlight. Mark your calendars for the Second Annual Community Salute to Service, which will be held at 6:30 PM Thursday, April the 23rd, in the Waynesville High School gym. We want everyone to pack the gym to show support for area high school students who are going to serve in the military following graduation. The Wayne, uh, the, excuse me, the Winter Festival of Nations will be held this Friday, February the 21st. That's a reschedule. The festival will begin at 4:30 PM at the Waynesville High School Gymnasium before the boys' basketball game. In addition, our Special Olympians will compete before the JV game that evening, which is always a great competition to watch, and they usually get introduced with the basketball players as well. It's fantastic. So, early bird admission is $2 per person, then after 5:15 admissions, $4 per person. Due to inclement weather days, the Waynesville R six School District will be in session on May 21st, 22nd, 26th, 27th, 28th, and 29th. Always, yeah, say that. Spring break, though, let's talk about the good things. Now, spring break will be March 9th through the 13th. And just to remind all parents, when we can be here, please, every healthy child be in school every day. That's all I have, sir.
I got hot off the press that our Tiger TV crew cleaned house today at Skills USA, so a round of applause.
Congratulations.
Of course, I believe they're led by the Teacher of the County.
Teacher of the Millennium?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We did have Teacher of the Year, Mr. Wallace.
He called me and begged me to bring that up, so congratulations, Mr. Wallace.
He likes that recognition.
Okay, we'll move over to consent agenda items. Financials, Dr. Berger?
Thank you, Mr. President. The financials for February 10th, 2020, in the MOSF account, $48,325,781. CDs with the Bank of Crocker, $10.5 million. In our general account, $2,492,154. Payroll account, $4,894. Total funds for February 10th, $61,322,831.4 cents.
Okay, thank you. And then on the new contracts MOUs, anything there you wanted to, we could pretty-
That is for sign language services for students through their IEP, and so that is the standard hourly rate for that service.
Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through Y? Pondrum makes a motion, does he have a second? Dr. Former? All in favor? Motion carries? And discussions down here.
Discussion.
Okay. Okay, student recognitions, All-State Band, Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. In December, Waynesville High School sophomore James Knight was selected for the Missouri All-State Band, the top band honor in the state. And in addition to being selected for All-State Band, he was selected as First Chair for the Tuba Section, which is quite an honor. And, and he was invited to participate in, with the other All-State Band members at the 2020 Missouri Music Educators Conference at Tantera. And do we have? Congratulations.
All-State Choir, Dr. Atkins?
Um, this past fall, Waynesville High School senior Katie Blau was selected for the Missouri All-State Choir, and she was also invited to perform at the 2020 Music Educators Conference at Tantera in January. And so, we would like to congratulate Katie for her accomplishment.
Congratulations. Missouri State Beta Competition, Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Beta Club has been growing and is continuing to earn multiple honors. The first group I'm going to call up, and I apologize, I don't have your certificates here tonight, but we will get them delivered to the high school for you. Our Beta School Club Officers qualified for the Beta Club Nationals by earning a qualifying score at the Leadership Summit in Cape Girardeau in October. The Beta Officers participated in a Lead Outside the Box Challenge at the Summit. The Beta Officers are President Caitlin Harry, Vice President Jasmine Cassidy, Secretary Sophia Shipley Johnson, and Treasurer Lydia Choi. Congratulations, ladies. If you'll stand right up here, we're gonna call the rest of the members up, and we'll just do one photo. In December, our Beta Club Students participated in the state, in the Club State Competition, and the following students qualified for Nationals. In Quiz Bowl, fourth place, we had Ally Free, AJ Cabanas, Estacia Garcia, and Janie Keys. And in creative writing, we had Janie Keys, third place. Oh, ma-, I'm sorry, ma'. And then creative writing, fourth place, we had Kristin Snead. And we also had Elizabeth, congratulations, Elizabeth Kim for creative writing in fifth place, and she was unable to be here tonight. Congratulations to our Beta Team, and we look forward to hearing about how you do at Nationals this summer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I highly recommend, for you at home or here tonight, follow the Waynesville High School social media pages, and you can see this group of kids here, but how incredible our kids are and all the achievements we have throughout the year. It always amazes me how, how good they all are, so we'll move on to Spotlight in Education. Mr. Van Belkum and Mr. Vernon, or Miss, I'm sorry.
Tonight, I have the privilege to honor Mrs. Joanie Wilson and Mrs. Edna Robert for our Spotlight on Education. Ms. Wilson is in her eighteenth year of teaching and has been at Waynesville Middle School for the past three years. She began her teaching career as a biology teacher and then started her career as a high school counselor at Waynesville Career Center. Ms. Wilson has dedicated herself to inspire her students and to seeing their smiling faces every day. Ms. Wilson often collaborates with teachers to implement her guidance lessons while supporting her students in and out of the classroom. Ms. Wilson not only works well with her students, but also collaborates with teachers and staff to provide the best learning environment possible for our students at Waynesville Middle School. Here are a few comments from her colleagues. Ms. Wilson provides her guidance services to around 400-plus 7th grade students. She makes herself available on a daily basis for students to meet and talk, provides the social and emotional support for a full student body, creates and manages plans for student intervention, teaches student guidance lessons, helps students manage choose and begin their six-year planning with a goal of graduation. In addition to providing the students with excellent support and resources, Ms. Wilson is always available to meet and discuss concerns of the staff and what they, and their concerns for their students. Ms. Wilson loves her students and will do anything to help them succeed. Ms. Wilson is an excellent example of highly qualified professionals that Waynesville R six School District is known and respected for. I now have the honor to introduce Ms. Edna Roberts. This is Ms. Roberts' fortieth year in the district, and she is continuing and going strong. Oh, my bad. Ms. Roberts is dedicated to her work and always gives 110% in everything she does. She manages the office, actually the entire school, better than anyone. As a colleague stated, she is the glue that holds everyone together. Ms. Roberts has a true passion for our students in the Waynesville School District. She is the face of our school and an inspiration to all students and staff to give their best and to be a Waynesville Tiger. Here are a few comments from her colleagues. Edna has a smile and has been a staple in the office every day. She is patient with students, parents, and teachers. She is willing to help anyone who asks. I think she has a magic wand because she makes things happen that are not possible. Without Ms. Edna, the middle school would be in chaos on a daily basis. She knows the intricate part of all the operations. If it needs to be done, it gets done in lightning speed time. Ms. Roberts is a great leader at Waynesville Middle School, and we are lucky to have her.
Dr. Henry, I can add some expert testimony. When I was in middle school, I was not worried about Dr. Patterson, or Mr. Patterson. I was not worried about Mr. Slaughter. I was worried about Ms. Edna.
Yes. Yeah. I understand, yeah.
The gatekeeper to the cubbyhole. Congratulations, all.
Good.
Now, community recognitions.
Actually, Mr. President, yes.
I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna go ahead and introduce our collaborative team recognition tonight. The Collaborative Team Spotlight is awarded to our 8th grade science team, Ms. McCall, Mr. Dunkel, Ms. Alsayed, and Mr. Cruz. On the pre-test for standard 6 through 8 ETSI A1, Safety and Solution Design, the students started off the year with a 4.29% advanced and proficient on their pre-test. As the unit continued, at the post-test, students were 75.57%, students were proficient and advanced. So, huge growth within that amount of time. The strategy used to teach the standard was hands-on station rotation and a focus on writing. The team used CER, which is Claim, Evidence, and Reasoning, for students to organize their thoughts while using evidence to support their answers. They work effectively together, keeping the end in mind, always collaborating, and striving to find ways to enhance the learning process in which turn enhances the success of the students. The 8th grade science team is an excellent example for which others can learn and grow. A couple highlight this year for them is their continued work on the World Without Fish, cross-curricular unit lesson with ELA classes. It was their second year in doing the unit, and they were able to spend more time incorporating and reading strategies with nonfiction texts and writing using the claim, evidence, and reasoning. And we are very excited and appreciate Mr. Pondrum for coming in and, and talking to our students to helping with that lesson as well. Their team cohesiveness, as a team, they, they love excitement, enthusiasm for their students. They make personal connections with the students and their content. They have the greatest colleagues in the district when it comes to humor, flexibility, to do what is best for the students. The team can have honest conversations with each other about teaching strategies, data, and what is working and what is not working. They have a growth mindset to new ideas and tools that can help strengthen the students' understanding. They also understand each other's weaknesses and strengths as a team member and know how to divide tasks to help find lessons to support our students for academic success while collaborating. Here's a few examples from their colleagues. The 8th grade science team is exceptional. Their fully collaborative team focuses on student success. They continue to grow and use student performance data to drive their instruction and choose research-based instructional strategies. Their use of cooperative structures to present material and to remediate for students needing help is exceptional. The 8th grade science team is an excellent example of teamwork using the professional learning community for student success and providing personal support for each and every member. The 8th grade science team is a powerhouse team. They collaborate well together. They give helpful advice to others. Their PLC was actually filmed this year as exemplary standard for other teams to follow. So, we'd like to congratulate our science team.
Kim, I'm glad you came out of your shell. I remember in high school how quiet you were and shy, so. Okay, now we'll go to community recognitions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It's again my honor and privilege to recognize a community member that helps support the students in our district so much tonight. Randy and Brittany Clayton of Owl West Collision are here. Come on up, guys, to be recognized for their generous support of Snack in a Pack. So, we just wanna thank you so much. Our district appreciates it, and it's such a value to our students. Thank you very much. But they also have an exciting announcement tonight, so I'll let them do that.
So, we would like to go ahead and say, we've done this raffle car fundraiser for the last three years. In the past, we have partnered with CASA, AUSA, and Grace. And this past year, we partnered with the Waynesville School District for the Snack in a Pack program. It was a pleasure working with everyone in the Waynesville School District, and with it being the largest fundraiser in Snack in a Pack history, we would like to announce that we plan on doing this again next year and hopefully for many more years to come.
Thank you very much. The Board appreciates all you've done for us. Thank you. Okay, staff recognitions. Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bells?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's again my honor to recognize this month's Transportation Employee of the Month, Christine Pagel. Come on up, please. Christine has been in the Transportation Department for the last six years. She is on a bus aide on our early childhood route, and she cares about our students so much that she'll often be seen playing with them on the way to school, reading them books and keeping them engaged so their behavior stays in check, and also just practicing some of the academic skills that they're learning in school. And so, it's employees like this that we value so much and mean so much to our students. So, again, congratulations, Christine, on this, on being this month's Transportation Employee of the Month. And you wanna come up?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations and thank you. Move to discussion items. Proposed 2020-2021 Transportation Handbook, first reading, Mrs. Bells?
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration is proposing the changes in red to the Transportation Handbook for the 2021, is presenting it as a first reading tonight.
Any comments or questions? The safety program update, Mrs. Sumner?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. President and Board Members. So, today, this evening, I'm going to be presenting on updates to our safety program. Our CSIP goals in the safety program are these three things. Coordinate lunches with local law enforcement. Our goal two is establish an emergency services day. And then, goal three is to make sure that we have process charts for safety drill procedures all over our school district. So, in goal one, we have lunches with local law enforcement. Here are just a couple of pictures. We have many, too many to post here, but we are trying to partner with our local law enforcement to ensure that our students know that our, our local law enforcement is here to help and serve our community, and we just want to foster a better partnership. So, what you see in the middle is the pamphlet or the flyer that we've given to post MPs, Military Police on Post, our, um, our St. Robert Law Enforcement Office, and our Waynesville Police Department to come and eat lunch with us. We comp at least three meals, and we invite them to come and hang out and eat some of our good food. Alright, goal two is to establish an emergency services day. And as you can see, it's already underway. It will happen on Saturday, April 11th, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. It will be right here at Waynesville High School. Mr. Lubert allowed me to put it here, so I'm excited about that. And we will have the K-9 unit from Post and lots of different emergency services from Post, including the emergency services that are provided to us through the Army Community Service Center. We will have Waynesville PD, St. Robert PD, EMTs, ambulances, the Children's Division, food closet, Snack in a Pack, Fire Department, and you name it. We're trying to have every emergency service that is available to anyone in the community that we serve. Goal three is that we would put up process charts. These charts were placed in schools recently. It's in all classrooms, gymnasiums, restrooms. We're trying to put them everywhere. What this does is allow students who are newly literate, or students who struggle to read, or who need visual cues to see what to do during a drill. So, we have them for tornado, fire, intruder, and earthquake. So, thanks to Proposition One, we have several new things that we're using to ensure safety in our district. The first thing we have is secure vestibules. And so, we are in the process of completing all of those vestibules. Their off, off-post is completed, and we are in the process of finishing up everything on post. What you see at the bottom left is the Freedom Vestibule. And above that, on the top right, is our new kid account system. In the kid account system, once you come through the vestibule and out of the elements, you'll press the two N, and we call it a two N because you're able to see the person and hear them speak, and they gain entry into our building that way. And with an ID, and I like to stress that we ensure that parents or any visitor to our building shows ID, and we double-check it to ensure that we allow students to go with the people that are in our system because we wanna make sure we get them home the way they, they came. And so, they type their information into the kid account system, and it pulls up who they are, and they're able to tell us what they want, whether they, whether they want to pick the student up or they want to come in to visit. It tracks everything that happens in the building. It also tracks transportation changes at the elementary level at East and Freedom Elementary. So, you will see that because of Proposition One, we were able to add a full-time SRO. That is Officer Murphy. He was part-time, and he now is full-time. And we were also able to add off SRO Bennett to our staff. He's also part-time. And I'd like to ask them to come up. Come on up. Give them a hand, you guys, 'cause they have a very important job in our district. This is our protection squad, our safety squad. So, we have, and I'll tell you what schools they work at. We have Officer Alexander, and all of our officers are commissioned Waynesville Police Officers. We have Officer Alexander. He covers the 6th Grade Center and Waynesville Middle School. We have Officer Lopez, who is our supervisor. He helps us manage. He's at Waynesville High School. We also have Officer Medrano at Waynesville High School. They do Waynesville High School and WCC. We also have Officer Bennett, who just was newly commissioned in the Waynesville Police Department, and he's part-time at the high school. And we have Officer Murphy at East Elementary. He also helps cover Piney for Mrs. Emoio. And we have missing tonight, Officer Hicks. He wishes he could be here, but he sends his love to all of you, and he helps us out at Freedom Elementary. And additionally, we have partnerships with the schools on post, and Officer Alexander and Officer Lopez help us manage the schools as liaisons to our post schools in regards to safety and security. So, let's just give them another round of applause.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Alright, we thank them- We thank them for their service. We certainly can't do it without them, and we appreciate everything you do for us. So in the middle, what we tried to do is have our SROs mentor students. And you see here Officer Hicks, who's not here with us tonight, but he has a nice picture up front, and he's mentoring a student that looks like he's had, has a lot of energy. And then we have our police vehicles. We refurbished them. We wrapped them and wrapped them over in our Waynesville logo. We tinted the windows to ensure student privacy as we transport students, usually for, just to take them home, but not for serious issues, but we want to protect their, their identity. And so we have tinted windows, and we just have upgraded the cars, so. And that is as a result of our Proposition One funding. So we have, based on our executive order 1904, that was passed to establish a strategic safety plan for school districts. And so to that end, we have been working on the Threat Assessment Protocol for Waynesville School District. As a result of training that we went to Officer Lopez, Officer Murphy, and I went to the FBI Threat Assessment Training in September, we brought back some information in order to better prepare and develop our training plan for threat assessments. Now, we presented this threat assessment at DLT to all of the administrators to get feedback. They gave us some great feedback. We've also presented this protocol plan to our PBS Committee to offer input at our February meeting, and we are going to be excited about presenting it to you, the board, so that you can see what we'll be doing. We've titled it the TAC Team, Threat Assessment Care Team, and it will ensure that we are meeting the needs of any type of threat or crisis situation in our district, to ensure students are properly taken care of. On the right-hand side, you will see a Crisis Management Plan booklet, and then a smaller Emergency Management Plan that we use in our classrooms. At every DLT now, we are training our staff, our administrative staff, on the use of these two booklets, specifically the booklet on the right to ensure that we are on one sheet of music with regards to handling emergencies in our school district. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Well, I will say that I, I know a lot of our SRO, SRO officers personally, and they are outstanding people. They're kind, polite, they do the job they need to do, but they can also turn around and, and a kindergarten can run it to them, and, and it's open arms. I mean, they're super guys, and we appreciate you guys, everything you do for us. Mrs. Sumter, thank you for the presentation. You guys are doing about a thousand. CSIP update, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President, and appreciate this opportunity to go through our comprehensive school improvement plan. Probably take the next two hours to go over in detail all the action steps we've implemented throughout the course. I, I can see they're all looking really excited.
I gave you three hours.
Three, well, I thought I'd cut it down for the interest of time, but no, we, we're very fortunate to have a outstanding comprehensive school improvement planning team that works on this. You, you actually have two of your colleagues that, that serve on this team, Mr. Keeling and Mr. Dearing, and they're always in attendance at our meetings, always providing great input, and we do appreciate that. I also appreciate all my colleagues in the audience, as well as our parents that serve. It's, it truly takes, the first thing that I'll talk about, a, a team, to, to accomplish the things we've accomplished, and also be prepared to accept the challenges that we have in the future. And this, this team, we, we kind of used this acronym earlier this year, Together Engaging in Motivating Students. We knew engagement and motivation is something we really needed to work on, and I commend the work of our administrative team, our staff, and our students in, in really improving throughout the course of this year. Of course, any comprehensive school improvement plan should go back to the vision, mission, and collective commitments of your school district. As you can see here with our vision, excels a student-centered community of learners that embraces diversity and innovation. Hopefully you already see some things up there, student-centered, community, diversity, and innovation that would, would really ring true in many of the reports that we've given you, even already tonight in study session and, and throughout the, the year. And you can see the commitments, the actions we're going to take to make sure those things occur. That's where we want to be, our ideal state, and we feel like we're moving that direction in our mission. And what we do each and every day is to empower and prepare individual students for future opportunities as citizens and leaders. Some great things going on to, to promote critical thinking, exploring career interests. You heard from our students earlier, had some great comments, and we truly want to make that a very meaningful part of our curriculum, and preparing students to be successful and be leaders in our society. So in our plan, we have this, which is our, our overall goals. These are focused on, on student performance. And as you can see, when you look at our, our scorecard here, we've improved in most of our areas. The only two areas that we don't have improvement in right now are areas that, that are changes in test, and we also had some changes in science and social studies tests over the last couple of years, so that's why you don't see that there. But progress has been made in each, toward each of our objectives in our plan. And again, as you can see there, four, you might say, well, that, that looks like it's going down. That's the one you want to go down. That's reducing our, our gap between overall population and student subgroups. So staff and students are doing a great job there. As I made, you know, we could go on. Usually I try to get them out of there in two and a half hours in CSIP meetings. Doesn't always happen very well. So it's, it's, you know, it's actually a reduced plan from what we used to have, but it's one that's, got many steps to it, and everything we're going to cover here are steps that our, our various departments, our schools, and, and teacher teams throughout the district are doing. So I'm just going to pick a few to highlight here on, on what's going on, kind of highlights from this year. So first one you have there, certainly expansion of OTC and MSU partnerships has been a great thing, and appreciate the work of our Career Center, as well as our high school in establishing new internship opportunities for our students. That's going to be a big piece of MCP six in the future, just to let you know. So it's a good thing that we were working this. We also commend Fort Leonard Wood for opening their doors and, and allowing us to have those opportunities. Leader in Me, talked about earlier. One thing that our students said that was certainly accurate is teaching of empathy, teaching of leadership, teaching of, of treating others with respect. All of that is inherent in Leader in Me program. We have several administrators in the district trained now as trainers, and a great deal of work is going on in there. Indicator two, core content complete review, updated annually as far as our, our data goes. One of the things that, that we wanted to recognize from our retreat last summer was I wanted to really have our collaborative team, since they're such a cornerstone of what we do, come up and brag on them a little bit and recognize them. That can't happen without identifying priority standards, without providing collaboration time, without them having the data to support and the strategies to support what they're doing in the classroom. And that all flows from this foundation in the curriculum documents that have been built. So I commend our entire instruction department, the work Dr. Atkins has done, Mr. Henson to, to bring this about. All of our principals have been engaged in this, and numerous teachers throughout our district. Several other things going on, many great things, going to keep moving, just in the interest of time, but I do want to point out at the bottom there, Diversity Team. Our Diversity Team organized our first ever, and if, if you haven't had a chance to read about it or, or look at any of the photos, we had our first poetry and art slam last week, and it was fantastic. I mean, we had over a hundred people in the audience. We had about 20 students read their own original work to all the people in the audience. We had art out, parents attended. I mean, it was just a great, and what I thought was one of the most magnificent things about it is when you had the picture at the end, it was, it was a student picture that represented our district. We had students from different ethnicities, different religions, different places in the world they'd been, and it was so wonderful to see them there, all coming around a unified cause. So great job from our Diversity Team. Dr. Washington worked very hard on that, as did Mrs. Ward, and many of our administrators that night contributed. Subgroup data always plays a key role here, and as we come into this assessment season, it's even more important as we start looking at improving the various groups of students we have and getting them with, with no gap when compared to our overall population. Technology, the, the technology folks, Mr. Henson, Mr. Harrison have been doing a great job, both on the infrastructure end and the technology end, as you can see here. Blended learning observations, they've created a great rubric now that our instructional techs are going around classrooms, and they're looking at what strategies are being used, bringing that information back, not in an evaluative form, but just bringing the information back to build professional development that'll be more effective for our teachers. So great work going on there. Stakeholder engagement, certainly we have our, our lead engagement person behind me here and taking all the pictures. She does a great job in this area, but we have increased exponentially our social media presence, our tweeting, our Facebooking, our reminding, all those things like that, and, and we sure appreciate Mary Ann's work on that, as well as our principals who, who tweet quite a bit now and, and are in the social media world that I'm struggling to stay up with from time to time. So they do an excellent job. Systemic improvement, just to, to let you know, one of the first things that, that we did this year, actually started in the summer, was create a, a Common PLC Team Meeting Report. That's been a change for our teachers and, and our administrators really on collaboration, but one that I think in the long run is going to pay huge dividends for us. It's keeping all of our teams focused on the same goals, the same objectives, and that goal and objective really is how are our students performing? And when they're not performing well, what are we going to do to help them perform better? And what works most effectively in doing that? You heard some of that tonight from Mr. Vernon when he was talking about our middle school staff. That, that's the kind of information that this is generating for us to share, because we have enough talent and wisdom and intelligence in our district that we can solve any problem that we have academically. We just have to share that information. It's that vitally important. So they're doing a great job with it. It has been a change. It hasn't been easy all the time, but they've done some really good work on it. All of the administrators, even our district office folks, review those team meeting reports to provide feedback, so we stay engaged in the process. District Building Climate Teams have been great. We've already learned, we've made adjustments. Mrs. Bells has her shout-out that goes out. So even if a, a teacher or a classified person's not selected as a Person of the Month, if they were nominated and did some great things, it goes out the whole district anyway, and give a lot of recognition for what they're doing. And the Student Leadership Team, and, and I hope you enjoyed that tonight. We do that every quarter. To me, it's been a, a great addition to hear from the kids directly what they're thinking about our system, and, and I think when you find out at the end of the day, they give great, critical, yet honest feedback, and they love their school. You know, they just want to see us continue to get better. Governance, we are certainly exploring infrastructure improvements. In fact, we had Mrs. Sumter just mention some of that here, certainly with Proposition One, continuing to, to focus on the safety and security upgrades, and we continue to recognize more and more folks here, and, and I think that's a wonderful thing. We go out and deliver a, a certified and, and classified Employee of the Month. As I've mentioned to you all before, it's always great. I show up, Mrs. Bells shows up, usually Mr. Dearing's there, and, and we walk down the hallway with the principal, and we go in the classroom. I think it was Mr. Vernon's building last time, and that teacher looks over the door like, oh my gosh, what's going on? You know, that kind of stuff. So it's, it's kind of, you know, like we get a little sarcastic jab into, and we're like, hey, you're Teacher of the Month, and they're about to fall on the floor. But it's a, it's a great thing, and, and that we, we try to recognize them in front of their kids when we can, and, and it's a neat thing for them to, to get to take part in, because we do appreciate all that they're doing. Human Resources, there's a bunch going on. You know, we've developed this focus area just a couple of years ago with our updated CSIP plan, and so professional development on inter率reliability continues to provide honest feedback, consistent feedback between our buildings. Research and develop safety drill process charts, that was mentioned by Mrs. Sumter, but that's been a big effort in, in a lift in the district to get that done, and, and it's always important to stay on top of that area in our school. One thing that I would mention here, and this was discussed in the Student Leadership Team portion, revise and implement counseling curriculum. We need to continue focusing on that college and career readiness path, and especially pushing that down to kids at the middle school level and having a logical progression, seven through 12, that prepares students to, to pursue whatever it is that they want to pursue beyond high school. And we, we had a student speak about it tonight. It certainly made a huge impact on me, and it's something we want to continue working on for the remainder of the year. Provide trauma-informed training, doing an excellent job with that. Mrs. Long and, and her group are, are training our folks. Trauma-informed training basically is, is helping our staff be more sensitive and aware to issues that students are having outside the classroom and bring in with them to school and help them respond to them in more constructive ways, and, and try to, to be, help their behavior be more positive in school and, and understand the background of what goes on in, in some of our kids' lives. So doing a great job there. Facilities and resources, identifying and budgeting funds for enhancement of safe facilities. Certainly, you've seen quite a bit of that over the last few weeks. I will mention their budgeting Proposition One safety funds. That, that continues to be one of the emphasis, along with technology that we, that we promised in the election, and, and we really feel like we've delivered, and will continue delivering with those revenues that come in. What I'll wrap up with here as far as facilities and resources is just to keep B2 status always at the forefront of our minds. You know, heavily impacted aid is vital to this district. Because of heavily impacted aid, we don't have a debt service levy in our district. We, we are a very, very low debt district. We're able to be at the top or in the top three of all categories in salary. We have, in my humble opinion, the finest facilities in our entire conference. All of that with 94% of the school districts having a higher tax levy than we do. We are among the 6% lowest tax school districts in the state of Missouri. And I'll tell you, we can provide the list. Dr. Berger has it on his computer right there, I guarantee you. You go out and look at those other districts that are taxed at or below us and see if they have what we have in our district. So we take great pride in that, but it's also a, a job to keep communicating the great value we have as a school district, and, and what it does for our kids, you know, first and foremost. So I just ask you to keep that on your mind. That's a, that's always going to be important thing for us. You know, if you lose B2, heavily impacted aid, things look a lot different around here in a hurry, you know? So we need to always keep that in the forefront. For the remainder of the year, we had our CSIP meeting between snows and non-snows and snows that turned into rain and all the other fun things that we get to contend with. We finally had our meeting, and we discussed these areas as areas of emphasis for the remainder of the year. First of all, there were some concerns in class sizes, and we have checked that. Overall, we're, we're good in class sizes. We do have a couple areas that we need to improve on, but it's also important to reemphasize the fact that a high-quality teacher in a classroom is more important than the population of that classroom. And research has certainly has shown that over many years in terms of class size and teaching. Communicating financial and spending information are public. Just with some of the messages I just shared with you, college and career counseling for students, have shared that with you. Math performance, we want to continue to focus on. That's an area that we have to continue to get better at as we go down the road here. And professional development for effective implementation of, of blended learning. And one area that Mr. Henson pointed out to me when he shared that data, because we keep bait on everything and talk about it, as you well know, is secondary folks, and making sure elementary seems to kind of have a grasp on this, but we need to continue to place an emphasis on PD and blended learning for our, for our secondary faculty. So that was a lot of information. It, it was a shade under three hours, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any comments or questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Henry. Proposed job descriptions, first reading, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following job descriptions are presented to the board as a first reading. 3.2.6 Tiger Performance Head Coach. And then new job descriptions, 3.19.7 Board Certified Behavior Analyst, and 3.19.7A Behavior Technician. Administration will request approval at the regular March meeting.
Thank you. Waynesville Middle School Construction Update, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Dwight Dickerson here for the update tonight.
Good evening, everyone. I see a lot of familiar and friendly faces here, and it's nice to see you all again. My partner, Don Husman, gets all the good jobs, so he gets to come down here, but every once in a while, he lets me out of the office. So I'm going to ask Dr. Berger if I do a good job tonight, to let me come back down here again, because I enjoy coming down here and seeing you all. So we'll go through this. I hope I do this right. It's the arrow on the right? Okay, we'll, we'll hit some. There we go. For those of you who have been past the job site recently, you're starting to see a lot more activity going on, mainly because we're coming up out of the ground now, and the steel is beginning to be erected. And that's always a neat phase, because then you begin to see what the basic building shape is going to look like. So again, we have some more. So, again, we have some more steel there that's being erected, and it's good to have the weather starting to moderate a little bit, because I think hopefully we're past the worst part of it. I know we're going to get rains, we always get spring rains, but hopefully that will allow us to continue on and make good progress with the project. Again, more steel that's going up. Here, they're preparing the second-floor deck for concrete pouring, which, as you can see, they're moving ahead quite rapidly with that. Some more decking that's going down. Brick, we're starting to see brick come up, too, and that's always, that's always nice to see. And again, because of the weather moderating, I think you're going to see a lot more progress with the masonry work, too. And then the wraparound, single-story addition that's going around the gymnasium, you're going to start to see that come out of the ground now, too. Another view. It's beginning to really take shape now. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but I'm just tickled to death to be down here to see you all again.
Any comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dwight.
MSBA Legislative Update, Dr. Fulmer. You wanted to.
I had the privilege of attending the Missouri School Boards Association Legislative Session Forum on the 10th of February. One of the first things that came out of the forum that I need to inform our board of and anybody else interested in it is the Igniting, which is the old Leadership Conference, but the Igniting Great Ideas Summit, which is a conference for board members and school administrators, will be June the 19th this year in Springfield, Missouri. Last year, it was in Kansas City, and this year, it will be in Springfield, Missouri on the 19th. The biggest change that has occurred since last year, though, will be the Annual Conference. The Annual Conference for MSBA in cooperation with MASA will be the 25th of September, and that will be hosted in Kansas City, Missouri, for the first time this year. That's the conference that we used to attend at Tantera, but it has moved to Kansas City, Missouri, this year. And it will be in conjunction with the School Safety Conference, which will be occurring at the same time in Kansas City. They'll do both conferences at the same time. In the past, they usually run the School Safety Conference first and then the Annual Conference, or they've run the School Safety Conference by itself in another location. But they'll both be in Kansas City on the 25th of September this year. There are, there's a lot of action already started up, a lot in regard to education this session of the legislature. There are many bills already posted on charter schools and on tax credits or vouchers or TSA, whatever you want to, whatever they happen to be called this time. Charter school bills are moving rapidly right now, and we need to watch and see what happens there. The Internet Sales Tax Bill is moving forward, and will, they anticipate will probably be passed this time, where the state will start collecting on interstate sales that occur in Missouri. And that could happen where it'll impact the general revenue. Funding that was, is moving forward, funding bill that will allow the cash balances from the foundation formula, instead of going back to the state, it will move into transportation. That is Senate Bill 528 right now, and it looks like it's going to go through. The, one of the other bills that MSBA is not very happy with is House Bill 1347, which prohibits the public expenditure of funds to use for people to testify before the Senate or the House. Basically, what it's saying is if you're an employee of a school district, an administrator, or superintendent, or even a board member, although we don't, we're not paid, a lot of times, if we attend a conference, the school will help offset the conference fees. But any of, if that occurs, you will not be allowed to testify in hearings before the legislature. So, it's, they're calling it a silencing vote in regard to school administrators, superintendents, and board members. And it looks like it may make it out. The last one that I would bring up, as often happens with the legislature, dictating what schools will do and won't do, is adding another item to the curriculum that we have to teach, and that particular item is vaping. There is a bill, and it's being well-supported, that will require school districts to teach vaping. Put it into the curriculum someplace. So, we either got to tighten up something or drop something else out, but it would be an item that we would be required to teach, starting probably next year. So, there are many other bills. It was a very good conference. It's a privilege to be able to attend the conference and see what's going on. I also had the opportunity to meet with Representative Lynch, and we discussed education issues. Senator Brown was not in his office, so we didn't have an opportunity to talk to him at all. But it was a good conference, and I appreciate being able to attend that. Thank you.
Thank Dr. Fulmer. I also encourage everybody up here and in the crowd, if there's anything you see on there, feel free to call your representatives or your senators. I've got mine on speed dial, and, but they're always good to talk with, and they'll visit with you over the issues. Move over to action items. Summer school teacher pay proposal, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. It has been a number of years since we've looked at summer school pay, and so, we are recommending increasing summer school pay for teachers from 27, 25 per instructional hour to 29 per instructional hour. So, for a teacher who teaches full-time in summer school, this would raise their summer stipend from $3,270 to $3,480. Additionally, we are asking to increase paraprofessional pay from 960 per instructional hour to 1060 per instructional hour for the summer. So, administration recommends a motion to approve the summer school pay proposal as presented. The approximate total cost to the district for this increase would be $26,630.
Do I have any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Fulmer makes a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Pondrum, second, all in favor, show of hands? Seven oh, motion carries. Proposed job description, second reading, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration requests approval of 2.21.3 Coordinator of Alternative Education/Homeless as presented, please.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling makes a motion, do I have a second?
So moved.
Mr. Dearing's second, all in favor, show of hands? Seven oh, motion carries. Surplus, Dr. Berger.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We've got a bigger round of surplus slated for April, but this is just tech items. And with that, motion to declare excess items, equipments, as surplus property from the tech department.
Any comments or questions on that? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Quinn makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Keeling's second, all in favor, show of hands? Seven oh, motion carries. Proposed course description book changes for 2021, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lubert, the high school principal, has submitted a course description book change, which proposes the addition of a sports information class. It would be constructed similarly to current journalism classes, but with a focus on MSHA activities. And if approved, this change will become effective with our 2021 school year scheduling. Administration recommends a motion to waive first reading and approve the proposed course description change as presented.
Any comments or questions? A lot of kids are excited about this class, so do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling makes a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Dearing's second, all in favor, show of hands? Seven oh, motion carries. MSBA Policy Procedure Update, second reading, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We discussed these last month. I've received no questions since our previous discussion. Again, appreciate the work of our Tabs Committee that does a look at all of these policies in detail, polls, changes, to reflect the needs and of our community, and does an excellent job with that. So, I'd recommend these for approval.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Pondrum makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Dearing's second, all in favor, show of hands? Seven oh, motion carries. He looks scared on that air. Safety and security equipment upgrade, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration, in partnership with Waynesville Police Department, is requesting a one-time expenditure of $3,279.40 for upgraded safety and security firearms and holsters for our school resource officers.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Fulmer makes a motion, Mr. Pondrum, second, all in favor, show of hands? Six in favor, opposed? One, motion carries. Budget amendment, safety purchases, Dr. Berger.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Outside of the FY '20 budget and out of the reserves, as was discussed in the study session, a request is being made to increase the safety capital projects budget in the amount of $582,250 for safety needs.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Pondrum makes the motion, Mr. Keeling's seconds, all in favor, show of hands? Seven oh, motion carries. Closed session, closed record, closed vote is allowed by RSMO 610.021. Section 3, Hiring, Firing, Discipline, Promotion of Employees. Section 6, Scholastic Probation, Expulsion, or Graduation of, or, yeah, Graduation of Identifiable Individuals. And Section 13, Individual Personnel Records, Performance Ratings. Do I have a motion to enter in a closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Quinn makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Second, roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in closed.